I don't like these. No, they're just not there.
Great. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 9, 2023 Town Council meeting. I would ask that we stand at this time for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
No, it's okay. I'll just suffer in silence. I doubt that.
I would ask that we take a moment of silence with all that's happening in the world to just reflect on everything. Thank you. At this time, I have to announce that we are recording this for LCAT, and I would ask that if anyone is audio or video recording in the audience, to please let us know. I don't see anyone. So we are going to jump right into public comments. Jeanie, did anyone sign up for a public comment?
No, no one signed up.
And Don, I don't see anyone. Other hands up.
There isn't any.
Would you like to make a public comment?
I don't know if this is the right time. It was about the hearing about the alcohol liquor license.
I think the best time for that would be when we actually do that, and I will open it up to the public at that point for you. Thank you, though. Moving on, council comments.
I have one.
Great, Connor.
This was just a communication to us sent to us by Aaron Kober, and it was just announcing that they're presenting the Golden Kane Award to Valerie Albano on May 18 at 11:30 a.m. at the Senior Center, and people are welcome to attend. Valerie has had turned 102 on May 1.
Wow.
Awesome. Is there anyone else with any comments or thoughts? Okay, I will go right into the town manager's report. Mary?
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. We have my report, which I'm sure you've all read with great fascination.
Absolutely.
Always.
We had a department heads meeting the day following the last council meeting. It was April 11 was your meeting, and our meeting was the 12th, and we're trying to get back on a regular schedule with those meetings because they're very, they're very enjoyable, I think, for the department heads, and they're informative for me and for each other, and we don't, we don't join together as a group often enough. Covid kind of put a crimp in our style for that period of time, and we're slowly emerging from it, but it just affects everything. So I just want you to know that when we have these meetings, of course, they're not secret by any means, but they're not advertised, and they're just very collegial, and I hope that they can continue when you have a new town manager, because I've been told by many of the department heads that they really appreciate the opportunity to just sit around and share what's going on in their respective departments. So beyond that, I wanted to update you on some of the property issues that have been pending for a while. We do now have a signed purchase and sale agreement regarding 70 Maple Street. I think the president signed it on about April 26, and the condition in the agreement is that there'll be a closing within 30 days of the execution of the agreement. So I checked with council the other day, and we still don't have a date certain, but they assured me that it will be before Memorial Day weekend. And with respect to the property at 382 North Main Street, we did add the lease payments to the building division budget of the Department of Public Works, and the recap that was edited by Kim Collins on May 2, I think it was sent to you. If you don't have it, I can send it out again, but it reflects that. And one other minor change with respect to the town clerk's budget, we added back in the $1,000 for what?
For the new signage for early voting. It's mandated, meaning new signage for the outdoors and the indoors and updated signage for the polling location.
So the, thank you. So there's those two, not necessarily minor changes, but those are the only changes. The reason that the lease payments weren't included in the original draft that I submitted on April 11 was we weren't certain that we were going to be paying rent, and I guess we're still a bit unresolved on that. The, as you know, the Finance Oversight Committee has begun its review of the town and school district operating and capital budgets. The committee meets every Thursday at 1:30 and asks certain department heads that they feel have the largest budgets or perhaps the most questionable expenses, but high expenses to offer explanations. And so, so far, they've reviewed the Department of Public Works, IT, police, and fire will be done tomorrow, and they have voted to recommend no change to 12 or 13 other departmental budgets at the most recent meeting. Planning Director Bailey Mitchell and the DBW Superintendent Bruce Fenny have been working with West Mass Development Corporation on submission for Mass Works grants, which I think I've reported on in prior months. This is through a portal called One Stop Grants, and we're working with Jeff Daley from West Mass Development. Both Bailey and Bruce have filed what's known as an expression of interest in the grant funding. Bailey's deals with the Town Center zoning plan, and Bruce Fenny's deals with the rehabilitation of the Chestnut Street Water Pumping Station. Those grants are funded annually, awarded and funded in October, late September, October, and we're, as I say in my report, cautiously optimistic that will be favorably reviewed, and those projects combined are in excess of $2.5 million. That would be terrific to accomplish both of those projects. Our Labor Relations Council and Town Management met with George Driscoll, who is the Joint Labor Management Commission Representative on the management side in late April to have our first session with respect to the Fire Department negotiations. The outcome of that was not very productive other than getting to talk with George Driscoll again. He was involved in our, when our police went to mediation last year. But they are very short-staffed, and we don't anticipate the next meeting, and this was just a one-sided meeting. It wasn't with the fire service personnel. Probably late May, if not June, before there'll be another scheduled hearing. So unfortunately, that issue is, is just sort of dormant with respect to any progress on it. The Veterans Board met last Tuesday. We did interview Wednesday, I'm sorry. We did interview two candidates, both of whom were very energetic and promising, and a job offer will be made. We made a selection of one of the two, pending review and consultation with the references that he had provided. This individual has a lot of skills. He's an Army veteran. He currently works in the Summers Prison area. The other candidate also works at Leeds Veterans Hospital in the Enforcement Division. He's a lieutenant up there. So both candidates were great, and we don't have an answer yet as to which of the two will be our choice, pending the receipt of those reference checks. I know Connor just read the note from Erin Kober. I can't tell you how impressed I am with what's going on at our Council on Aging. She has been dealing, every time I'm in here, Robin Frichette is here. Robin is Bruce, Brian Ash's aide, as you know, and she's been very attentive to what Erin represents as her concerns, and the ultimate outcome this time is that Rep. Ash has earmarked funding of $75,000 for a new tri-trolley, tri-count, tri-town van. Erin does enormous outreach. I brought with me tonight the contact, I don't know if you are recipients of these emails of what's going on at the Civic Center, at the Senior Center, but they have activities planned pretty much every day of the week. Farmer's Market, they had yesterday was a service vendor who will read to the blind. They have all kinds of events that are geared to enrichment and of life and quality of life issues for elders in particular. This one, Mindful of Being Your Best Self, Valley Radio I was the one I was just referring to. Movies, God bless you, whoever that is, a spring tea party, cultural tour of Bo cap. It's just amazing the creativity that results in some of this programming, and I think the town's very fortunate to have Erin in the leadership role here at the Council on Aging, which is not to diminish the contributions of the library, because I also brought with me the programming events that are planned for the library, and they too are trying to be very inclusive. Teen Advisory Board, they want, you know, they're trying to attract demographics of all the parties who use the library. They have an introduction to Google for elder people who may not necessarily be astute in that. They have a home buying seminar, origami workshop, just an enormous amount of variety with their programming, and they invite everybody to attend. So these come through that constant contact service, and I would encourage any of the counselors or anybody who's hearing this report to sign up for that service, because it'll really enhance your understanding of how much effort is put out each day by these department heads. The Hazard Mitigation Committee had its second meeting recently, and the Critical Facilities Map for Inclusion in our New Plan was offered at that meeting, as well as the beginning phase of a, an assessment of town's needs and resources to answer those needs in the event of a, of an emergency. Chief Morissette is running the show on that, but he's retained the services of Piner Valley. Mimi Kaplan is the counselor that's assisting us with that effort. Recreation, summer schedule, spring schedule, summer schedule has begun. As usual, the, they're going 100 miles an hour, trying to service every sport ever created under the sun, and they do a great job at it. I, again, the energy level of some of these people is remarkable. Before you tonight, I had submitted Christine Johnston's application to be reappointed to the Board of Health. She's a sitting chair now, and I think she's doing a terrific job in that role, so I encourage you to view that appointment, reappointment favorably. And the other comment I wanted to make about boards, happens to have Mr. Kingston in the room, thankfully, but I wanted to publicly acknowledge that he has, his long service on the planning board has expired as of April 1, 2023. He maybe doesn't realize that since he's been at meetings throughout May and maybe at others during the month of May, but, you know, he's really been so steadfast in his service and such an institutional rock for the planning board and other areas and boards on which he has sat. So I personally want to thank Mr. Kingston for all that time and effort and dedication, and on behalf of the town, I want to thank him particularly for always being that steady source of information and reliable information at that. So thank you, George. And lastly, Westcom Board met last Friday. I think it was the seventh or eighth Friday consecutively that we met, but we did finally complete the contract negotiations for the executive director and have a signed contract with her for the next three years. They're currently advertising for six additional dispatchers, and they have seven fairly new dispatchers in training. And once those new hires or vacancies are filled and the training is completed, they'll be at full staff. So onward and upward for that district, so things are going well.
Great. Thank you.
Welcome.
Does anyone have any questions for Mary? Okay, we will move right on then. We have approval of minutes next, the April 11, 2023 open session. Do I have a motion?
Do. Motion to approve the open session minutes from our April 11, 2023 meeting.
Second?
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. This is a roll call vote. Anna?
Yes.
Matt? Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I am a yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
And Michael?
Yes.
Thank you. Communications, correspondence, and announcements. I do not have any in front of me. So the next is, we're going to jump right into the public hearings. We have a, this is a continuation of a public hearing for an all-alcoholic beverages on premises license for Three Guys Catering LLC, location at 400 Prospect Street. Council members present, Anna Jones, Matt Boucher, Kathy Hill, Ralph Page, Marilyn Richards, Connor O'Shea, and Michael Kane. Jeanie, can you read the legal notice into the record for us?
Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the General Laws that Three Guys Catering LLC has applied for an all-alcoholic beverages on premises license proposed for a location at 400 Prospect Street, East Long Meadow, Mass. The Town Council will hold a public hearing on the application on Tuesday, April 11, 2023, at the Council on Aging Media Room 328 North Main Street or via Zoom webinar at 6:15 p.m. For the council, Jean R. Quagletti, Town Clerk, Clerk of the Council.
Thank you. So at this time, Ms. Rich? Welcome back.
Welcome back. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm here, obviously, representing Three Guys Catering, and in light of the building commissioner's letter, which we still feel there's room for discussion interpretation, we have decided with the draw our proposals this time. So we're going to be moving on, and I just want to emphasize that we are looking for an alternative site that might give us the ability to be in East Long Meadow, at the same time balance that with using the 31-day license that can be given at St. Luke's. So we are going to be going forward. We are coming back to at some point, hopefully sooner than later, with an alternative plan, because our heart is still in this community. And we've shown that by charity services of these senior citizens and to the East Long Meadow High School scholarships. So we'll be back. So once again, we're withdrawing our proposal, and we'll be back with a new one sooner than later. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. So this is still a public hearing, so per protocol, I have to open it up to the public and ask if there's anyone in the public that would like to make a comment considering the withdrawal of this. George, I'll start with you.
Thank you. Counselors, let me start by saying I have nothing against St. Luke's. I like, they're a great place, and I'm a regular, they're Taste of Grease. But as was mentioned, I've been on regulatory boards in this town for quite a long time, and one of the things that I have learned on that is that setting precedent is really a big step. And for this proposal or for another one that comes back similar to this, what I've learned is that if you approve John Doe doing something, the next day Jim Jones is going to come in and said, you let him do it, now you got to let me do it. In addition to St. Luke's, there are, by my count, at least eight other churches in this town with underutilized halls and probably stretched finances. So if this sort of arrangement is approved for one church, I would not be surprised if you were to see others come in behind them and ask for the same privileges. And I just wanted to make that point based on my experience. Thank you for your time.
Before you step up, I don't believe I asked for your name.
Oh, George Kingston, 66 Royal Lane. Thank you. Oh, madam. My mistake. I should have remembered that. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Lady in blue?
I'm Judy Lipke. I live at 450 Prospect Street. So I want to thank them. I'm glad they're withdrawing, because I was opposed to it. I only, there's only two houses between my house and the church's house. I didn't even know this was happening until I saw the reminder. It said they had let people in the community know. Well, I'm two houses away, and I didn't know anything about it until I read it in the, in the newspaper. So, you know, there's already a lot of traffic on Prospect Street, and so they speed, they go too fast. They would have either gone to Chestnut Street or Pease Road, and I'm living toward the Pease roadside, and there's a lot of traffic. I would not have bought that house. I bought five years ago. I would not have bought that house if I had known a banquet stuffed would have been at that church so often. So I'm very happy that it has been withdrawn, and I'm, I read that Mrs. Richards was kind of, had some questions about us, the residential area. So I want to thank you specifically for remembering that, for those who didn't, wasn't quite, we weren't quite on top of what's going on in the township. So thank you.
Thank you. Yes, gentleman in the back first. Sorry.
So will we come up here?
Yes, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Matthew Kane. I live at 403 Prospect. And while my wife Heather and I were notified of a request, we had received a letter that Three Guys Catering was looking to apply for a one-day or one-event license. We weren't necessarily opposed to that. We've lived in that house for eight years, and we've seen the Taste of Grease, we've seen the traffic that that event produces. Our main concerns were that if the, well, I'll start with this. One, I'm happy that they're withdrawing the application, because we were opposed to it being coming a continual license to serve for multiple events, mainly because of traffic issues. If the parking lot were to become overflowing, people have parked even for the Taste of Grease. They'll park on Pembroke, which is the entrance to Great Woods. They'll park on either side of the road, all the way down the road, and if these events were to get out at 11 or 12 o'clock, it's, I just don't think a very safe situation. So we initially thought, and we didn't come to the April 11 hearing, as I said, we had thought it was for a one-time license. So we thought one time, we're okay with that, but when we heard in the reminder that it was going to be for continual use, we wanted to be at this meeting to express our objections. So I thank you.
Thank you. And I did see this gentleman's name, and if you'd state your name for the record.
My name is John Turner, and I live on Ridge Road, which is nowhere near where the Greek Orthodox Church is. I'm sorry I'm not dressed up, but I called the town and left a message to let me know if the meeting was tonight, because I read it last week. I couldn't remember if it was Tuesday or Wednesday. I called the town hall, left a message, never got a call back. And then I went in the trash and picked up the reminder. So I said, gee, I got some objections to this. I think it was like 130 days they were going to have events there. Is that correct or not?
So it's been withdrawn, but an all-alcoholic license allows them to serve alcohol at all different events, all different times. I mean, set parameters on it.
Can you, can you correct me if this was wrong? They were looking at perhaps 100 or 130 events?
I believe that's roughly what they stated. 50 to 100 events.
Okay. And this would actually do damage to any, any business in town that is doing the same thing. After all, a church doesn't pay taxes. Is this correct? So what they're doing is they're becoming a business. If they were to have 100 events there, that's a business. That's not, you know, oh, we'll do a little something, the church will make some money or stuff like that. Places in town pay taxes so they can do this. Now we're going to make it so churches can do this and they don't have to do their taxes. That, that opens us up to a whole different can of worms of what's going to happen with every other church in town. I mean, is this just once now? Is this something that's going to keep going on? I mean, once you do it once, you've got to do it for everybody else too. And the other thing, if you're going to have 100 events there, you're not going to just be bringing in alcoholic beverages 100 times a year. You're going to have it stored there at the church. This is, it's just too many ifs, and I think people need a lot more time. I mean, and went to the planning board, first time I ever heard of it or saw it was in the paper. Okay? And I just, I just think it needs a lot more thought, because there's a lot more negatives here. I haven't heard anybody from the neighborhood, I just got here, or anybody else jump up and down and say, gee, this is a great idea. I mean, Rich Ficero was the principal at the high school for many years. He's got places there. They could have, are we going to have alcoholic beverage places in schools next? Where does it stop? Do we really need this? Or is this just a way to make money for people? I don't know. But right now, I haven't heard enough. And it has to be in the paper, because this is a large, for people to be here today. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, I would, at this time, bring it back to the board. Obviously, the applicant has withdrawn it, so I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close public hearing.
Second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Michael?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Marilyn? No, sorry, Kathy. I turned too quick. Kathy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
So because it's been withdrawn, we don't have to vote on?
Take any other action, yeah.
So we don't have to take any other action. So we are all set.
Confirm the A, B, C, C, just to let them know, because when you apply, you have to key in with them, so.
Perfect. Thank you. So. I have 6:28. I think by the time.
6:30.
Read the next one in. It will be 6:30?
Got it.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing at 6:30 for the proposed self-storage bylaw. So this is a public hearing to address a proposed self-storage zoning bylaw amendment and a second reading of the amendment. Council members present are Anna Jones, Kathy Hill, Ralph Page, Marilyn Richards, Connor O'Shea, and Michael Kane. I would ask that the clerk read the legal notice into the record.
East Long Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on May 9, 2023, at 6:30 p.m. in the media room of the Council on Aging, located at 328 North Main Street, excuse me, for the purpose of amending the Town of East Long Meadow zoning bylaws, Section 450-11.2, terms defined in Table 3-1, Schedule of Use Regulations, to include self-storage, self-service storage and indoor self-storage facilities. Information relating to pending bylaw amendments is available for public inspection at the Town Hall, 60 Center Square. To view an electronic version of the proposed amendments, please visit eastlongmeadow.gov. Public hearing may also be attended via Zoom webinar. For the council, Jean R. Quagletti, Town Clerk, Clerk of the Council.
Great, thank you. So at this time, I would ask a counselor if they would, Marilyn, like to read in for a second reading of it?
Okay, I will be reading, actually, two documents. The first is the proposed that was submitted to the council on April 11, and the other is the recommended proposal from the Planning Matters Subcommittee. So the first proposal regarding a recommendation of bylaw amendment, self-storage facilities. At the Planning Board's meeting April 4, 2023, the Board reviewed proposed amendments to the Town of East Long Meadow zoning bylaws, Chapter 450, Section 11.2, and Table 3-1, Schedule of Use Regulations, attached. The Board voted unanimously to recommend the amendments with certain edits to the Town Council for their review and approval. to the Town Council for their review and approval. The edits proposed by the Board are included in the attached language for the Town Council's review. The Board proposed having two definitions for indoor self-storage, one that applies only to the industrial and industrial garden park districts, and another that applies only to the mixed-use village district. This is because the use definition originally crafted as part of the mixed-use village district bylaw is substantively different than the use definition proposed herein. The Board's recommendation is one way to provide a solution to this issue. However, I would recommend a different solution. I recommend, as Director of Planning and Community Development, that the use be defined once in Chapter 450, Section 11.2, for all zoning districts for clarity and ease of administration. Additionally, the use should not be permitted within the mixed-use village district as the indoor self-storage use with either definition is not appropriate within a mixed-use setting. The Board's discussion on this vote is duly noted in the minutes of their April 4, 2023 meeting, respectfully submitted, Bailey Mitchell, Director of Planning and Community Development. Okay, Article 11, Definitions, Chapter 450, Section 11.2, Terms Defined. Indoor self-storage, mixed-use village district. A facility that provides indoor units leased to individuals and business owners for the storage of household goods, excess supplies, and archived records as examples. Such facilities may be climate-controlled, individually secured, and may have multiple stories with elevator access. All storage units to be accessed from within the building, and no storage unit shall be used as a residence. Indoor self-storage, industrial district and industrial garden park district. A facility that provides indoor units leased to individuals and business owners for the purpose of storing and removing personal property. Such facilities may be climate-controlled, individually secured, and may have multiple stories with elevator access. The majority of the storage units must be accessed from within the building. Any storage units to be accessed from the exterior of the building shall be ground-floor units and shall be appropriately screened to minimize their visibility from public ways. No storage unit shall be used as a residence. Self-service storage facility. Any real property designed or used for the purpose of renting or leasing individual storage space to tenants who are to have access to that space for the purpose of storing and removing personal property. A self-storage, a self-service storage facility is not a warehouse. All storage units must be individually secured, and no storage unit shall be used as a residence. All buildings within a self-service storage facility shall be limited to one story. And in Table 3-1, Schedule of Use Regulations, under E Business Uses, Item Number 3, Indoor Self-Storage, Standards and Conditions, see Article 8, and under the respective district categories, it's, it's a special permit under industrial and industrial garden park for this use. And all the remaining, oh, I'm sorry. Special permit in the industrial and industrial garden park. Under Mixed Use Village, it's allowed by right. And the remaining districts, it's prohibited. Under Business Unit Uses, Number 20, New Category Self-Service Storage Facility, Standards and Conditions, see Article 8. Under the category, the district categories, it's a special permit under industrial and industrial garden park. And it's an N under all the other districts, not permitted. That's the first one.
So before you go into the second, I would just like to give a little background. We had a first reading on this last month. The Board elected to send this to the Planning Matters Subcommittee for a review on it. That's what we're about to hear now. So the Planning Matters Subcommittee looked at everything, took Bailey's notes into context. He was there to present. And this is what the recommendation is from the Planning Matters Subcommittee.
And just to add, the committee members there, Ken Hancock and Sid Starks and myself, Tom Christensen was not available, and neither was Matt Voucher. However, Bailey Mitchell was there representing his department. And Ralph Page was there as ex officio for the council. Okay, under Article 11, Definitions, Chapter 450, 11.2, Terms Defined, the recommendation from the Planning Matters Subcommittee is that the council repeal the first definition of indoor self-storage. And that was the definition that was connected to the mixed-use village district. The next definition, indoor self-storage, they recommend that it be submitted as, rather approved as originally submitted. And I will read you that definition. A facility that provides indoor units leased to individuals and business owners for the purpose of storing and removing personal property. Such facilities may be climate-controlled, individually secured, and may have multiple stories for elevator access. The majority of the storage units must be accessed from within the building. Any storage units to be accessed from the exterior of the building shall be ground-floor units and shall be appropriately screened to minimize their visibility from public ways. No storage unit shall be used as a residence. Also, the definition self-service storage facility is being recommended as proposed. Any real property designed or used for the purpose of renting or leasing individual storage space to tenants who are to have access to that space for the purpose of storing and removing personal property. A self-service storage facility is not a warehouse. All storage units must be individually secured, and no storage unit shall be used as a residence. All buildings within a self-service storage facility shall be limited to one store. And under Table 3-1, Schedule of Use Regulations, E Business Uses, Section Number 3, Indoor Self-Storage, we are recommending that, or rather, the committee is recommending, under the mixed-use village district where an indoor storage facility was allowed by right, we are recommending that an indoor storage facility be placed under special permit. That's a change from the original proposal. The remaining districts, industrial garden park and industrial zone, an indoor storage special permit for both. And the remaining districts, it's not permitted. And under E Business Uses, Number 20, self-service storage facility, which is a new use to the table of uses, Standards and Conditions, see Article 8. We are recommending, as proposed, industrial garden and industrial garden park, that the self-service storage facility be under special permit. And the remaining districts, an N, which means it's not permitted. That's it.
That's it?
I'm done.
Thank you. So is Bailey in the party on Zoom?
Hello? Good evening.
How are you tonight? So Bailey, could you just give us a quick overview? I know we've already went through this a month ago as far as the reasonings behind adding in a description, definitions for the self-storage facility?
Yeah, so the self-storage or the self-service storage facility is, just adding the definition is really to clarify what currently exists and the language is not. I guess it doesn't have a definition for self-service storage facilities. There's only one for indoor self-storage. And it's not clear in the use table currently if it's permitted or prohibited in other districts. And it's caused some confusion for a couple of people who are looking to potentially bring an indoor self-storage facility into town. So I just wanted to bring it to the council to clarify before, you know, turning them away entirely or, you know, allowing it because it's not allowed as I see it or as I interpret the bylaws currently, so.
Does anyone have any questions for Bailey? Okay, at this time, I'm gonna open it up to the public. I'm gonna ask if anyone in the public has any thoughts or comments or concerns with regards to definitions and the locations for self-storage facilities. Okay. I do. Mr. Turner, would you like to come up, please? And I'm gonna ask you again to state your name for the record.
John Turner, 71 Ridge Road, East Long Meadow. Where are they gonna put this? I mean, I've seen signs around town, but I haven't seen anything else.
So this, this isn't what you're thinking, this isn't a warehouse that you're seeing signs for?
I understand.
What this is, is to clarify, like the coyote den that we already have, we already have a self-storage facility at the end of Baldwin Street. I think we have four of them in town.
Yeah.
What this is doing is putting a definition to those because in the past, we had approved those under a warehouse. And they're really not a warehouse. They're a self-storage facility. So what we're doing is putting a definition in. And then we're creating zones where they can go, which was industrial and industrial garden park under special permit. So anyone that now wants to put one in will have to come in front of the planning board for permission, and the public's gonna be notified and all beforehand. So that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to tighten it up.
So this is just a change in tightening the law?
Exactly.
In other words, you don't have somebody coming in to try to?
Nope.
Do something?
No application before the?
Okay, it was just a question.
Yeah, no, like I said, that's.
I'll go back to my seat.
No, it's a good question. Like I said, it's.
No, I, I, we're sitting, I'm sitting back there and I have, I have no clue what you're saying sometime, what it means.
Right.
All I know is we have residential and business zone. I don't know that we have half in between or we have to, you know, you can't have a dentist's office in your house because it's, you know, whatever.
Right. But this is something that our Planning and Community Development Director had seen a need to clarify it. And so that's what he's asking to do. So I think it's great.
No, okay, I just had no idea what he was talking about.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, hearing none, I will bring it back to the board. Is there any questions from the board, any comments, any thoughts? I would like to thank the Planning Matters Subcommittee. They did a great job. I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Anna?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Thank you. And would there be a motion?
There is. I move to approve the proposed amendments to the zoning bylaws, Section 450-11.2, and Table 3-1, Schedule of Use Regulations, relative to self-storage facilities as recommended by the Town Council Planning Matters Subcommittee.
Is there a second, Anna?
Sorry. Second.
Not trying to push you into it, but, okay, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion on it? Hearing none. All those in favor, we're gonna start roll call with Anna.
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Ralph, say yes. Marilyn? Connor?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Okay. Congratulations, Bailey. You made it through.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Very good job on it.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to number nine, 9A. Orders of the Day, Licensing Matters. We have a one-day liquor license at the Masonic Temple. Is there a motion?
Yes. I make a motion to approve a one-day liquor license for the Masonic Temple for June 17, 2023, 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. for a Skills Expo at 43 Chestnut Street.
Okay, have a motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, we will do a roll call vote. Michael?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
That motion passes. We will go on to A2. Approval of a one-day entertainment license for the East Long Meadow Cultural Council.
I move that we approve a one-day entertainment license for the East Long Meadow Cultural Council for June 24, 2023, 1 p.m. to 5 p.m. for the Arts and Brew Art Festival, 45 Baldwin Street.
My second. So before we go any further, I see someone in the audience. Would Mary like to come up and just give a little bit of a plug, what we're doing? And you on the spot?
Unnecessary, but kind of you. Thank you very much. Our cultural council last year ventured into the business of offering a cultural event. We had our very first Arts and Brew Festival. We were so honored to have Counselor Hill and Counselor Richards attend. And it went well. We get a lot of positive feedback, so we're doing it again. We have artists and we'd like to have some entertainment. We got some tunes going. So we'll, we'll see. We have adjusted the time a little bit. It was really long last year, but tightened that up. And so we hope you will all be able to join us. And you'll let us have music, please.
We'll let you know in a second. Thank you so much. So motions on the floor, it's been seconded, discussions happened. I will call for a roll call vote. Anna?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Perfect, you can have your entertainment. A3. A one-day liquor license, one-day liquor licenses for Craft 32 Bistro and Events. Is there a motion?
Yes, I move to approve one-day liquor licenses for Craft 32 Bistro and Events for June 30th, July 1st, July 2nd, and July 3rd, 2023, from 6 p.m. to 11 p.m. and July 4th, 2023, 11 a.m. to 4 p.m. for the East Long Meadow Rotary Club, 4th of July, Carnival Beer Tent at Veterans Memorial Fields.
Second.
And would you like to come up and give yourself a little plug?
John Sullivan, 23 Spring House Road, Hamilton, Massachusetts. I wrote an email this morning describing everything which the Rotary Club approved. Any questions? I'm here to answer them and keep it simple.
I was very impressed with the packet of information that we got today.
Did you see the videos attached?
Actually, no. But that doesn't mean it's not there.
There's links attached, you can watch.
Came in late for me to see it before the meeting, but.
I apologize.
No, that's, that's okay. But, but I was impressed with the commitment and the expense to what you're going to provide a proper event for the carnival and for the town.
Lot of work and glad to do it.
It's wonderful, so I just wanted to thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, it was very impressive. We usually don't get a whole breakdown like that. Very, very nice. Any other comments or questions?
Just that Mr. Sullivan made a remark. Just that Mr. Sullivan made a remark at the time they were uh requesting um a change in ownership to East Village Tavern, that uh if it was approved, that the town would not be disappointed in the, his company's ability to partner and do what was good and best for the town. And I have to say, kudos to you. You stepped up and you're good for your word.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Okay, motions on the floor, it's been seconded. I will call a roll call vote. Michael?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm a yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And Anna?
Yes.
Great. We look forward to seeing you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And the first and the second.
Okay. I jump into a whole list of financial matters. The first is a fifty-six thousand five hundred dollar um from American Rescue.
Oh, she had a conflict.
Reallocated. Is there a motion for this?
There is. I make a motion to approve fifty-six thousand five hundred from American Rescue Plan Act funds to be reallocated for the purchase of a twenty-twenty-three Chevy Tahoe SSV with warning package and mono radios for our fire department.
Second.
Okay, I see the chief. Come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for having me, and um thanks to Mary, the town manager. Uh, we were able to, with the, there was some extra ARPA money that was um available, leftover from a project that um I guess had some leftover money. So we have actually two items on the agenda. This is something that's been in the capital list for the past couple of years. Uh, unfortunately, it hasn't really made it to the the cut per se, and um it's, the cars we're using now is uh two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, and then two thousand fifteen. They're all emergency response vehicles. Some a little, uh, not as much as others, but they are, and they are putting some wear on them. Uh, we already put a transmission and a uh a PTO in the two thousand fourteen. I'm worried about the two thousand fifteen now, so it's, it's something that has to happen. Uh, we, we, we're at the point now where we're, the vehicles are, you know, they're, they're putting miles on them, and they're, they're getting tired.
So if I understand properly, the Tahoe will go to you, your vehicle gets handed down. We're not doing away with any because.
Not at this time. Right, right, yeah. We, we use Hector's car now during the day. He's using it. Um, and that during the nighttime, it's, it's actually a fly car for that third or fourth medical. Somebody comes in and they have to go to a medical by themselves. They're taking that as a fly car. This car, the, the car that the deputy's driving in now will, will become actually that fly car. It'll be set up with the medical equipment in it, so we're not moving one to the other to keep it, to keep it stocked, right?
And I know this was on the capital. I think it was right near the cut line or something, and it's a good use of ARPA funds, especially because we had extra.
Yep, and I, I understand we have to use it by a certain date, so we don't want to give it back.
We do, and we don't.
Does any counselor have any questions for the chief? Okay, we have a motion made, seconded, roll call vote. Anna?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
And Michael? Okay.
Thank you.
Don't go anywhere. Do I have a motion for Finance Matters B two?
I make a motion to approve twenty-five thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars from American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds to be reallocated for the purchase of firefighter bunker gear for the fire department.
Second.
And again, bunker gear.
Bunker gear has been on, um, and it's been actually um awarded through capital. And uh, but last year, we didn't, we didn't put it in the FY twenty-three's budget because I was able to secure it through grant funding. I requested it this year. Um, what we tried to do is um stagger our replacement by five or six sets a year. Um, and that way, the gear has a ten-year lifespan. With the new cancer concerns and uh other concerns, um, they, they recommend everybody have two sets of gear. We're almost at that point now, but we're also, if we keep replacing every, every year with five or six, it'll be a standard that we don't have to come to the town at some point and say, I need to buy thirty sets of gear. Which would, as you can see, when I first started, bunker gear was less than I thought. Marilyn was on a board of selectmen back there. It was probably less than a thousand dollars. Yeah, it was probably less, yeah, exactly, a few years ago. It was probably less than a thousand dollars per set of bunker gear. Um, now it's well over forty-five hundred dollars a set. It's uh, it's incredible with how the pricing's changed.
So typically, this is gonna be something, basically each year, you're gonna be looking to replace, like.
Yep, it's, it's in my five-year capital plan that it's, it's always there. We, we missed the year last year, goes to the grant. And if I get another grant that helps out, you know, I'll, I'll keep doing that. I'll keep putting in for it. But if it happens, we can take it off the capital list and use the other money elsewhere.
Any questions? Okay, motion's been made, seconded. Michael?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
There you go.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do I have a motion for Financial Matters B three?
Yes, I move to approve sixteen thousand seven hundred sixty-five dollars, twenty-one cents fund balance remaining from American Rescue Plan Act Project Fund, FY twenty-three Police Marked Cruisers to be transferred to the ARPA project, five eight five five one three FY twenty-three Police Unmarked Cruiser.
Second.
Okay. I see Chief Williams at the back. Can I get you to come forwards? Good evening.
Good evening, counselors.
Hi.
So there was extra money in one fund that's being rolled over to be used?
Yes. Uh, I'll try to, I'll try to tell the story in as logical narrative form as I can. And uh, and I actually learned even some more information I got reminded of when I spoke to Sergeant Bruno from my department, who really manages our vehicles, and um he reminded me of something this morning, which, or this afternoon, that I had even forgotten to tell town manager, I mean, Natalie, when we spoke about this, so. Shortly after capital was approved, this capital budget, Sergeant Bruno and I went to order cars. One of the, the unmarked, I mean, I'm sorry, the marked cars, uh, the dealer honored a quote that was six months old, which we didn't expect. And so between that and equipment that was able to transfer, that we didn't have to buy new, we were able to achieve some savings on the marked cruiser side. So that's why there was a little extra left in that account. On the unmarked side, we kinda had the opposite experience. We had gotten a quote for one vehicle. When we went to order it that day, which was, and this is why I forgot, it was eleven months ago. Now lots happen. Things just left my mind. We were told that vehicle was not in stock, and they didn't know when it would be available again. So we were left with, if we wanted to make an order then, we were left with two choices. Uh, the choice we made was for a Chevy Tahoe, which was actually the cheaper of the two choices. The other, the only other choice we had was a Ford Hybrid Explorer that uh was loaded with all the options. Though those, that's what we were presented with as our options. So we, we picked the Chevy Tahoe, which was the cheaper of the two options, figuring that we had a little leftover, and the marked cruiser side, we figured that could offset the difference in the unmarked side. So that's, uh, and, and in retrospect, you know, in talking it through at that point, we realized it really made sense to make that purchase at that time as well, because if we hadn't done it with the succession we have going on in the making of a lieutenant, I probably would have put that vehicle in this year's capital request anyway, so. It was a mistake on my part to, which I've since learned was a mistake, to uh assume that I could use that excess towards the unmarked, and I apologize for that. That's uh, that was purely error on, on my part. And I didn't, I didn't ask the town manager. I just made an assumption that vehicle money was vehicle money, and it was available.
Okay.
Good explanation.
Thank you.
So we have a motion on the floor and seconded. Is there any other discussion? Okay, I will start with Anna.
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
Connor? Yes.
And Michael?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda, Financial Matters B four. Is there a motion?
I move to approve forty-three thousand nine hundred forty-five dollars to be transferred from to a capital fund account to be created after approval of this vote for the schematic design services of a natorium on the campus of East Slam Meadow High School.
Okay, further discussion. I see Gordon. I see Greg. Come on forwards.
Evening, everybody.
Hi.
Good evening. Thank you. So I'm assuming this is, I didn't look up the word, but I'm assuming this is a pool building.
Adatorium.
Yes.
Never heard of that word.
Educate us.
Learn something every day. We're hoping to build one.
Just to give you a.
This isn't part of the school building schematic.
Correct.
We had to do this separately because of MSBA.
Correct.
And now we have to come up with a design so that we know what a cost is, so that when we put it on the ballot in November.
If two projects.
We can actually be accurate with what the cost is gonna be based on what we designed.
Right, correct.
I do.
Just a quick.
Like to add.
Synopsis, um, history, the feasibility study we're currently undergoing with the MSBA, which is for the school project, allowed for us in the first two phases to look at and start to, at least conceptually, think about a pool that would be connected to the high school. However, when you get to schematic design, MSBA is very clear that a pool and a school building must be two separate projects. So at schematic design, which is the phase we're currently going into, we have to now move forward with the feasibility study for the school building. So the feasibility study is ongoing, that part, and that schematic design will be taken care of under the feasibility study. Unfortunately, the schematic design for the pool building now has to go forward as a separate project. So there was a certain amount that was accomplished up to this point. Unfortunately, now there's a cost going forward for schematic design.
We are allowed to use the same architects, same engineers, same builder as well, which will help facilitate the whole project collectively. To have two builders on one job site would be difficult, so. There is some economy of scale, but because, as you said, President Page, that the Massachusetts School Building Authority does not allow us to put the pool as the project, we have to have two completely separate projects happening at the same time. So as Superintendent Smith said, the vote would be in November, and it would be two ballot questions. One for the entire school project. The second question would be for the, the separate pool project. May eighteenth is our next upcoming uh so, uh, public event. We invite all the public, all of you to come for more information on the project. We're moving forward, uh, and make some good progress on this, and we're hoping that we get the support of all of you and of the town uh in the November ballot questions.
So initially, my thought is we're paying for something that we don't even know if the school's gonna pass. We're paying for design on a pool building. If the vote doesn't pass, obviously, we're not gonna build a pool building off to the side.
Yes.
But knowing that we need accurate numbers to go to the voters so that they're gonna know uh what their taxes are gonna be and what, what overrides we're gonna need to do, debt exclusions. I don't like to spend money that we're not sure of, but again, I, I would invite the council. Any questions, any thoughts? Matt?
I strongly support it. Um, I support the school project, and um obviously the pool. As a former Marlin, member of the Marlin swim team, I support the uh natorium. And uh, yeah, I think we should pass it. Thank you.
I love it.
As a former Marlin, too. And just to speak to the rich history of swimming in this town, uh, it certainly exists. It would be a shame not to build the pool. Um, certainly, we can't keep the one we have. Obviously, it's, it's past its time. Um, so we strongly would encourage uh the voters of this town to, to support it as well. Um, we, we are in discussions, and as this process uh goes through, we look to um potentially put in uh stairs so that older folks would be able to access the pool off-hours or an, an alternate hour, so it'd be open to the community as well, to your point, President Page, to make it applicable to as many people as possible, because it would be an asset to this town, just like the turf field is an asset to the town for folks to go, uh, you know, walk around the track and such. We, we definitely would like to have the opportunity to open it up to the public because uh it's a great form of exercise, and if we can make it accessible to all folks in the town, uh, certainly would be worthwhile, I think.
Marilyn?
Thank you. Okay, we, I attend the school, the, the building committee meetings. The dollars are up there for the high school. I'm hearing that the pool was originally ten million, and now it may be twenty million before we get done. I mean, we don't know.
We don't know that, Marilyn, and I think.
But no, please let me finish. What, what I'm asking is somehow we need to say, okay, this is your cap. This is where you need to stop. And you need to tell us what you can do with this amount of money. Because what I'm hearing from folks in the community, um, you're not gonna support anything. That's the scary part, because what are we gonna do the day after? In terms of how do we address the ongoing issues at the high school? So I mean, we have to somehow send a message that we're being, you know, cost considerate in terms of what, what we're ending up with in terms of the, the dollar amount.
Just, just to address those two points, the first would be the whole project, yes, the, the, the cost is high. This is a, a difficult time to be building, but this is our one shot. Um, we will receive about thirty to thirty-five percent reimbursement, actual reimbursement for the project from the state. If we get a no vote, that goes away for a very long time, probably ten plus years. With that thirty, thirty-five percent, we're looking at about a hundred and twenty million dollars for the town, which is a large amount of money, biggest amount we've ever spent for the town. If not for, to your point, uh, Counselor Richards, then we're looking at a hundred million to repair the building that we have. So a hundred million to fix what we have and still have a very old building with smaller rooms, because we'll have to put new walls in for new chases for heating, new electrical, new roof, basically a whole new building with inside the existing building, which, let's be realistic. We spent about a million and five on capital projects on a yearly basis. I don't know where we'd come up with a hundred million. So yes, it's a large amount. It's a, it's impactful on people's taxes, and we realize that. We're doing our very best as a building committee um to keep that number intact, and we will continue to do that with our architects and engineers, um, but we realize the impact. The second point about the pool, because it's not an MSBA-related project, we have different standards for building. It will still be a beautiful uh top-notch facility, but the cost won't be as high as if it were attached to the original building. And we've been assured that by architects and engineers. We're pretty confident on that original number, uh, Marilyn. We don't know yet as we go through this process, but we wanna keep that number as tight as possible. We're talking about um using the locker rooms in the new high school potentially as part of the locker rooms for the pool, so that we don't have to re-duplicate our efforts and keep that project as small as possible, so it's as valuable as possible to the voters. We're doing our best, and I know you know that.
And I know that.
Yeah.
And just as a counselor, I look at, um, we're, we're being asked as a community to invest a substantial amount of money into one project. And, you know, I, I'm not denying the, the need, the cost, what's happening um in our world right now. However, we have other things out there that are equally as important and need money. So to invest that much in one eye, you know, one, one group or one focus is a scary thought when we need to look at elementary schools, the fire department, police department. You know, we could go down the list.
But this is our shot at the school. If, if we don't get it this time, we lose that reimbursement. And, and in reality, if we did this by ourselves nine years ago when we started the process, it would have probably cost us half of what it would cost. But we couldn't say to the voters, there's this money available from the state, but we're gonna go without them. So we applied. them. So we applied seven times to the state. It took us seven times to get it. This is our one shot. We have to go for it now. It will help us in property values. I truly believe that. If we don't build a new high school and people are looking to move to Western Mass with families, they're looking at the high school as the flagship. And so if we have the old school and you know, we've made, we've made news recently with our leaking roof, credits to the DPW, they sustain the building as best they can, it's time. Now's the time. And so it is a huge ticket and I'm very worried about that, Marilyn. But collectively, if we could all work together to soften that blow, we're up for any options.
That's why we show up at all the meetings.
I had one thing, and we appreciate that you come so often to all our meetings. Schematic design will also allow us to get very specific as to the cost of all areas of the project, which then allows us to do some of the things that I think you're talking about where we can say to the public, okay, this is the project. Where would you, if we need to, and maybe we don't, never know, where would you take away? Because then you'll have really specific costs on all the different areas. And right now, we're all in. We have a lot of different amenities that we'll be costing out and then we can start to take a look at that when we truly have a specific floor plan and materials costed out so that we really can look at all of that. There's one other point. Oh, if I may, sorry.
Go ahead.
I was going to pick up on your DPW. There's practicing for the public forum coming up. So there's a difference between daily maintenance and ongoing maintenance. Our DPW does an incredible job to keep the buildings, all buildings in town, but specifically the high school, which is now 63 years old, going. You have a roof that's over 25 years old. That's one point I wanted to make. The, but I'll leave it with that, the, for the DPW. Thank you.
So Anna, I saw your hand go up, but I think he answered.
I think he answered. I just wanted to ask, the schematic design, obviously, is going to give you, give everybody exact numbers for the pool, which we need for the ballot.
Right.
May I comment on that? Kim's not here tonight. I purposely allowed her not to be present. She had a conflict. But to your point, Anna, the numbers are not exact. She, I think, responded to Ben Murphy today because there was a request to Kim to ascertain what the debt service schedule would be for a $15 million addition for the pool, to the numbers that she's already crunched with our financial service hilltop. So in her response to Ben Murphy, she said, I'm happy to do that and to give you all the numbers as they appear to be, but it could change. I mean, they could change between now and next month, certainly by the time of the vote, depending on interest rates and other calculations and factors that are not ascertainable with certainty right now. So just, it won't be an exact number. It'll be better than no number. I just wanted to give her that cover because the information she's going to provide for the meeting tomorrow and then for the community forum, the caveat there is that it's, don't rely on it like it's gospel.
Right.
Subject to change, so.
We are sure about the number that's in front of us, the cost for schematic design.
I think that's finite.
And Ralph, just to follow up on a point you made on the Warren article, when we write the articles with the help of the attorney, I think it should state that if the school does not pass, then we're not going to build a pool if the pool passes. I think it could go the other way or both ways. I don't know. But the wording should probably include that because I don't foresee us building a pool and not a high school. The second thing I want to just request as part of this pool committee that we're forming, we would request a council member as part of that. So if you want to appoint that, if you're so amicable to do so, we would be happy to have someone join us.
Great. Any other topics here before we take a vote on?
Adatorium.
Adatorium. The pool building.
I'm going to be talking natorium.
Natorium.
Everyone else good? Connor?
I would just probably say that I think, given that it's two independent projects that we want to go together, but to me, it's not a critical path for the high school succeeding and therefore I'm not in favor of it moving forward at this time.
Okay, so this is a roll call vote. Michael, I'm going to start with you.
I did have one question prior and how time sensitive is it? Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
How time sensitive is it to vote on this this evening? Would it be more helpful to vote on this after the meeting on 5/18 or is it time sensitive?
We are meeting with the architects and engineers this Thursday, hoping to start the committee, Mike, on this Thursday. So we have plans to move forward. As you know, the high school project has been moving forward for quite some time now. So we have some catch-up to do, actually. So yeah, Mike, just to answer your question, it is partially time sensitive, yes.
And if I can tag on to that, the MSBA imposes a lot of deadlines on the committee to complete certain tasks at certain points, over which we have no control. So that, again, contributes to the time sensitivity.
But this would be completely separate as this doesn't go through MSBA or anything.
It is completely separate, but it's connected in that you have to have the same timing.
Yeah.
Right.
And in order to have enough knowledge by November for the vote, or actually by September, we have to get going, yeah.
You can't just put a balloon up and throw a pool in it?
We asked if we could put a balloon over at Pineau, but apparently that's not a palatable or feasible. We're open for options. We really are. Well, I believe, we believe as a committee that we need a pool. And as a former Marlin high school swimmer, it's a great program. The high school uses it. We see community availability use it, as I spoke to. I can't see us building a high school without a pool. So we're hoping to move forward with that.
Any other discussion? Okay, I'm going to try once more. Oops, sorry, Mike, I see your hand.
Correct me here. Without approving the schematic design, our residents won't be able to vote on whether we want a pool or not. Is that correct?
Yes. That's correct, Mike, yeah.
Okay, so I wouldn't want to take the vote away from our residents. And secondly, I'm not sure, asking for this vote maybe to be postponed was to have the meeting that the school's going to hold on 5/18. I'm wondering if that might have any relevance or add anything to how the council might feel on voting this, if we, you know, attend that or see what happens at the 5/18 meeting. Is there any relevance between the two?
So Mike, at the 5/18 meeting, we'll be discussing where we're at in the high school project, including up-to-date designs that we have. They're still preliminary. It'll be mostly based around the high school project, the building itself. We will take input from the community on the pool, but without conversation actually being started, we don't have designs or anything to really talk about. So I don't know that the 5/18 meeting, we will get much community input one way or the other, I guess, if that's what you're asking.
It is. I wonder if we give the council any more information prior to voting on this because I'm getting the feeling if we vote this down tonight, there won't be a pool. There won't be another opportunity. Is that correct?
We, I mean, we have to get, yes, we need to complete schematic design soon to have the ballot question for November, yes.
Okay, so I'm just going to add one other point here. I want to represent the 17,000 residents that voted us to voice our opinions for them. And I feel that we're taking away their vote in November, whether, you know, whether they want a pool or not, if we don't have a schematic design. Thank you.
So if I'm correct, the schematic design designs the building, doesn't alleviate the fact that in November, we could have a debt exclusion question on the ballot that says, do you approve the design and construction of a building for a pool not to exceed X amount of dollars? And you could design it after that and go forwards. Actually, I've actually looked into this, Ken, but I don't agree with that process. I agree with the process of voting it in tonight and the reason being is we get solid numbers. And to me, that's more important going forwards. But I just, I wanted to let people know that there is that option. I don't think it's the correct option myself, but it is something. So my input's done. Is there anyone else that would like to add anymore at this time? Okay, I'm going to try again. Mike, we're voting.
So we're voting to approve or disapprove the funds for the schematic design, correct?
Yes, approved.
So the motion was made to approve $43,945 to be transferred from free cash. So the motion is in the positive to approve that money for it.
Okay, and I apologize, but the audio, it is fading in and out. It is a little bit more difficult to follow the conversation. But hearing what I'm saying, I don't want to take the vote away from the residents. So I am voting yes to approve the funding.
Connor?
No.
Marilyn?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
That motion carries six to one. Thank you for being here. Thank you.
Thank you all for your time. May 18th, if any of you can come.
Yes.
Tell all your friends.
Got it.
Get the word on the street.
Committee on Thursday.
That's fun, too. November vote, most important.
Just out of curiosity, I received an email today that someone was trying to send an email to the building committee, questions and all. Is there a place online?
There's an email right on the website under the building project, but if the person wants to send it to me or you want to...
It was, it was copied to...
Okay.
It is for the camera, just so that they...
On the school, on the school website, the front page, the link, the email address for future reference.
Future.
Superintendent Smith is always available as, mine is on there as well, my email address, although I might be wrong, so.
Twenty-five, seven.
All in time.
I did get the PDF, though, and we'll work on the...
Came in late this afternoon.
But I figured this way here, anyone watching will know right where to find it.
Excellent. Thank you all for your time. Appreciate it.
Thomas dot Christian. You're the pool guy, right?
Yep.
Okay, the financial matters, where are we? Number five, is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve $4,605.64 remaining from project fund 3013 FY22 Sewer, Vineland Avenue, to be released to the sewer retained earnings.
I'll second it.
Let me do it this, I second the motion.
Okay, the motion's been made in seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Anna?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Thank you. B6, is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve $28,620.20 fund balances from various prior years capital projects, 3360 phone and voice router, $18,421.70 and 3406 COA boiler replacement, $10,178.50 to be transferred to the general fund.
I second.
Motion made in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Michael?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Yes.
We were told about this, but not sure if Michael was involved.
Jeannie sent him a text.
Okay, perfect.
So next one is B7. Is there a motion? Financial matters B7. Michael?
There is. I motion to approve $1,362.08 fund balance remaining from capital project fund FY20, 3356, lease cruisers and equipment, two, to be released to the general fund.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Anna?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Thank you. B8, is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve a donation of $1,500 from Marco Basile for the East Long Meadow Youth Wrestling Program per Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Anna?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Thank you. And financial matters B9, is there a motion?
I move to approve a donation of $1,000 from Steel Sports and Dan Reynolds for the East Long Meadow Youth Softball Program per Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A.
I second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Michael?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Financial matters done. Okay, old business. A proposed zone change for 312 Parker Street from residential double A to residential A, the first reading. Kathy, would you?
Yes, I will be happy to. To the members of the town council, I write on behalf of my client, Dr. Dominic Nardi, who respectfully requests that the town council grant a zone change from residential AA to residential A for his property at 312 Parker Street. As discussed further below, 312 Parker Street is currently a pre-existing non-conforming lot. Given the location of the property on the border between residential A and residential AA, this will be a minimal change to the zoning layout of the town. Further with a zone change, Dr. Nardi would be able to apply for the planning board to accept an approval not required plan, creating two conforming lots and transferring currently unused property to his daughter. Background, Dr. Nardi purchased 312 Parker Street on June 5, 2019. As shown on the proposed zone change plan attached hereto as Exhibit A, the lot contains a single-family home and has 90 feet of frontage along Parker Street and extends back over 600 feet for a total square footage of 54,135. As shown on the relevant portion of the East Long Meadow zoning district map, hereto for attached as Exhibit B, 312 Parker is on the northern border of a section of town zoned as residential AA. Under the East Long Meadow zoning bylaws, a lot in residential AA must have a minimum frontage of 175 feet and a minimum square footage of 40,000. While the lot is currently short of the frontage requirements, its existence predates the adopting of the zoning bylaws. Dr. Nardi is also the owner of 322 Parker Street, the adjoining lot to the north, which he purchased March 11, 2022. As shown on a map created from the East Long Meadow GIS database attached as Exhibit C, 322 Parker Street also contains a single-family home and has 232 feet of frontage on Parker Street with a total square footage of 34,660. 322 Parker Street is on the southerly border of a residential A district, C Exhibit B. Per the zoning bylaws, residential A district requires 140 feet of frontage and a minimum square footage of 25,000. 322 Parker more than meets requirements for residential A. Zone change request. Dr. Nardi's ultimate goal is to transfer a portion of the unused space in the rear setback of 312 Parker to his daughter and son-in-law, who live at 31 Rollins Drive. to his daughter and son-in-law, who live at thirty-one Rollins Drive, as well as creating a new conforming lot at three twelve Parker and modifying three twenty-two Parker to be a smaller, but still conforming lot. The ideal end result is illustrated on the proposed A N R plan attached hereto as Exhibit D. This endpoint would first necessitate that the town council accept Dr. Nardi's zone change request. A zone change for three twelve Parker from residential AA to residential A is required because it would allow Dr. Nardi to propose through the planning board's A N R process a lot for three twelve Parker within the lower dimensional requirement. A twenty-five thousand square foot lot for three twelve Parker, as opposed to forty thousand square feet, would clear the way to make the long and ungainly rear portion of the lot more usable by annexing it to his family member's lot, while allowing for an increase of three twelve Parker's frontage and honoring the intent of the zoning bylaws. The request change would not pose any hardship on neighbors or town residents, as the use of three twelve Parker would not be affected by the zone change. Rather, allowing this zone change with the subsequent A N R process will ensure that there is uniform footage on this stretch of Parker Street rather than one non-conforming lot with frontage far below the bylaws requirements. This change will have a minimum effect, minimal effect on the zoning layout of the town, as the border between residential A and residential AA will simply be moved by one lot. Conclusion. Dr. Nardi has explored other avenues for finding a use for the rear setback of three twelve Parker and transferring it to his family members. But this request is by far the best path forward, both for him and the town. It finds a use for the land and leaves the town with three conforming lots with adequate footage, where once there were two. The downsides are minimal, while the benefit to Dr. Nardi and the town are great. Dr. Nardi thanks you for your consideration. Sincerely, Attorney Joshua Y. Levine.
Okay, this is a first reading. We will have a second reading. Jeannie in June?
June thirteenth.
Which, at that time, that second reading is at a public hearing.
Right, and the applicant should be there for that.
Right.
Until that.
We, we let the applicant know that we didn't feel as though it was necessary for him to be here tonight, just to hear the reading. Okay, let's move on. Oh, the discussion of the proposed additional bylaw, Chapter five hundred fine and penalty schedule. So I have taken it upon myself, with your permission, to go through. We asked all the different departments for a list of their fees and penalties. I've compiled it. And then we sent it back to the town departments because I want to say when we started, this was roughly a year and a half ago. So in that year and a half time, there's multiple suggestions as far as different fees. And what I'm asking is how the board wants me to proceed. Do you want me to? We have this fee schedule done. Do you want me to list a new proposed fee schedule with what the departments are recommending? I want to say three quarters of the departments have probably had some adjustments to them. So that way there, we can see where the fees were, where they're going. I'm open for some thoughts and suggestions. I mean, we have the building department, who's completely changed the format. Fees would be charged. Marilyn?
I would, if I were making a decision on an increased fee or a decreased fee, I would want to know the history. What was the history? What was, what was prior, you know, the fee that was prior or the rationale behind why they're doing it? I mean, that makes it more labor intensive, but I don't know how else we would do it.
I would echo that. I don't, it's important to see where the.
I knew you guys were gonna say that.
The fee is right now and where it is recommended to go. And a lot of it could be a simple adjustment for the times. Others could, another reason could be it needs to be more in concert with, you know, recommendations from the state. So there's a, you know, there's obviously good reasons why the department heads have suggested an increase. Or I don't know if there's any decreases. There are some decreases?
Yes.
Okay, so I think we need to defer to the historical knowledge they will offer in that, the statement they're providing.
What's your timeline? What, I mean, I know you've got involved yourself.
Well, I'm hoping to compile everything and have it back for July. And that way there, we, we're out of the budget process. We're out of this fiscal year. And we look at it in July. And then what I'm hoping is, once everything's approved, then, once a year, we'll take a quick look. And the only adjustments we'll have to make is any recommendations on a fee change. So it's not about redoing the whole thing. It'll be maybe two departments say, hey, that dog license needs to go up five bucks. We're losing money, or however.
And some departments will vary year to year, right?
Yes.
So therefore, the interim review makes a lot of sense to kind of coincide with the fiscal year, too.
And my thought is, we're already doing, through the local licensing.
But we, we do a review and a recommendation every two years. But there may be other extenuating circumstances with various departments than there is with alcoholic licensing.
And just know, if something comes up in the middle of the year, we're mandated, oh, my God, we have to change this. We can change it at any time. It just, what this does is it forces us to start looking at them because there's certain fees that I don't think have been changed in thirty years. It just, no one ever looked at them. So what my thought is, is what I'll do is compile any departments that have changes to go against this. So that way there, you can look at this document, look at that, and see the differences. I get that done by tomorrow morning. Okay, I have my work cut out for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next. Under D one, we have a right of first refusal, five forty Summers Road. Is there a motion?
Yes, there is. I make a motion that the town not exercise its right to acquire land associated with five forty Summers Road through the right of first refusal under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter sixty-one A.
Second.
So just for a little background, this is the Apple Place. They are looking to break off a section of the land. The relative lives next door. It will be going to the relative. Obviously, the Apple Place was all under sixty-one A, so they're just removing that. We did get recommendation from the planning board and from conservation that we not exercise our rights. I tend to agree with that. Any other comments? Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Anna?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
And Michael?
Yes.
Thank you. D two. Post zoning bylaw amendment. Is Bailey still with us?
I'm still here.
Okay.
Want to do the motion first?
Yes, let's do the motion first, and then we'll talk to Bailey. Is there a motion?
I motion to refer the proposed zoning bylaw amendments relative to home office to the planning board for recommendation to the town council.
Is there a second?
Oh, a second.
Everyone's getting tired.
So this one is in regard, so there's three motions in front of us. This one's in regards to the home office. Bailey, you want to give us just a real quick, like thirty seconds?
Yeah, so the entire, all three of them are in regard to the process for site plan review. Like, I, I just restructured the proposals essentially and, and a three different, or three separate ones rather than one. So this one would be dealing with home office, which currently requires a site plan review waiver, so.
So if you remember, a month or so ago, two months ago, I don't know what it was. Was it April eleventh? Time flies. There was a proposal in front of us. So Bailey worked to basically separate those out, clarify them. And all he's asking for now is that we send it to the planning board. So we have a motion made and seconded. Anna?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Okay, D two B.
I motion to refer the proposed zoning bylaw amendments relative to parking plan review to the planning board for recommendation to the town council.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Michael?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Okay, D two C. Is there a motion, Mike?
I motion to refer the proposed zoning bylaw amendments relative to site plan review to the planning board for recommendation to the town council.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Just Bailey, first blush. It's good stuff. So thank you very much. I think it's gonna be a win going forward. Is that okay?
That's perfect, because I second that. It was a great job. I, I liked the way you broke it down. It's easy. It's very simple to read. You know what changes are being made. I will definitely make myself available for the planning board meetings. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have a vote. Anna?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, next, action items for next meeting. Do we have any action items for next meeting?
Our May twenty-third is not a regularly scheduled meeting, but it is, has been set so that the Finance Committee can come back to the council with its recommendations regarding the annual budget and the capital plan. And per the charter, we are required to hold a public hearing. So we will roll that all into one process.
Correct. Mary?
Do you anticipate voting on the budget on May twenty-third?
So if we don't vote on May twenty-third.
We have to meet again before June first.
We could meet the following week, on the thirtieth.
Right.
My anticipation was voting on it that night, on the twenty-third, unless something comes up. And that's why I left.
I only ask because of the motions that need to be prepared for your action.
Twenty of them, right.
Yeah, there's, well, it's getting close to twenty. I think it was thirteen or fourteen.
That's all?
Seems like, take a few extra, just.
Just throw them in there.
Yeah. But if you, so it would be good to know that when we, as soon as possible.
Thoughts?
Connor? Mind trying to get it all done on the twenty-third?
I'm attending the meetings, so I'm pretty up to speed on what's happening with the budget.
Any thoughts? Twenty-third, let's shoot for it.
Right now, the Finance Committee is meeting every Thursday. We're actually going a little longer this Thursday so that we can address every single one of the department requests and have time for our discussion and thoughts to prepare that report for the twenty-third. I would say, right now, things are going very well. Unless there is some, you know, outcry at the public hearing from a constituent or constituents, I would like to think we could get it all done in one evening.
Well, it just, as we've, we've had problems in prior years that preceded me, I know. But if there's a change in what's recommended in your view, I mean, it will take time to recess perhaps and analyze that. So I'm just trying to avoid that, so.
But we'll know that.
We won't know. I realize you don't know it as we sit here now.
We, our, besides Thursday, our next meeting would be the eighteenth, and we would know then if there would be any changes. Would that be enough time?
Sure, absolutely. And thanks for letting Kim take the night off. She had a conflict. So dealing with all those financial issues in her absence was helpful to her. Thank you.
So the charter requires a public hearing for the capital projects, but it doesn't require it for the budget. And like I said, if, if we choose to have one on the thirtieth for approval, we could do that.
The legal notice has been posted for the twenty-third for both capital improvement plan and the budget. So you could always continue the public hearing if necessary.
Well, it all depends on if, so the public hearing is on capital. So if all the capital projects.
I had it on, I put both.
You put both in there? Okay.
I think historically.
We've done both.
We've done both in the interest of transparency, you know.
And we could continue it.
We've done that just as, you know, a new form of government where, as opposed to two hundred people showing up at town meeting, now we have seven of us representing seventeen thousand, that it behooved us to make the, the budget as transparent as possible and allow the public that opportunity.
We're gonna shoot for the twenty-third. If something comes up with the financial oversight, obviously, I've been going to the meetings. I will be in touch and will adjust accordingly.
Thank you.
Okay, it's action.
Ralph, I just want to add that we did put the summary of the capital projects. This is gonna be published in the reminder. The item and the cost. And then the, the mention of the entire budget being able to be viewed either in my office or on the website. The low, low price.
Yes, because initially, it was extremely expensive.
Still isn't that.
Yeah, it's still not cheap, but. Okay, is there any other discussion before I make a motion to go into executive session? So I make a motion to move into executive session